Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Merritt City Council Workshop Wednesday, March 6, 2024. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please show that we have all council members present today and with Councilmember Cheney virtual. We have review of the minutes, review of the minutes of February 7, 2024, and February 12, 2024, regular minutes, and the February 12, 2024, closed session. Questions, comments, or concerns from council regarding those minutes? Hearing none. Proceeding forward to presentation by Department of Public Works regarding their building.
Mayor and council, thank you for having us here today to present our request for this new building and facility. I've directed our Assistant Public Works Director Randy Myers to with this project, and he's going to take it from here with the presentation. Bear with us, there's many slides to get through.
Thanks again for the opportunity. Kevin will start the slides. These are just the facilities that we have now. Show some deterioration in some of the buildings, how packed everything is. And just so you guys are aware, we have six buildings with stuff in, and three of them probably need to come down. So this is the main shop. If you have any questions as we get done each section, we'll just do each building, go from there, and then at the end we'll do the new building. See the exterior of the shop? It's not very big for what we do. Here's where we have the water issue running into that building because everything runs off the parking lot right into the block. This is where the guys gather in the morning to get their instructions, work orders. Just another shot of the same thing. This is a bay that we can barely fit two trucks in anymore. There are all the little lockers there on the left-hand sides are good. That's the locker area that we have for the guys now. Just wanted to show you how everything's just crammed in there. It's not organized, and you can guarantee whatever we need against the back wall each day. So you have to move everything to get to everything. We try to keep a good hand of supplies on it. So at 3:00 in the morning when we have issues, we have the stuff instead of waiting. So that's why there's so much stuff in there. This is the break room. Mind you, eight guys. This is where they eat their lunch. One bathroom for eight guys. Is there any questions, concerns on those? You guys got anything? This is the maintenance garage. We call it the big shop. This is where the equipment, most of, some, not really most, but majority of the equipment is. As you see, we jam equipment in next to salt spreaders, wherever we can fit it. Trucks in there. This, this picture is showing one truck's out, so there's another truck that goes in there. More salt spreaders. And mind you, in the winter, we move the salt spreaders from another building to this building, and then take the mowers to the other building. So there's no room to store everything that we need. You see, there's no room. Like, to work on something, we have to move the stuff out to work on it. And that's just looking down both sides of the big dump truck of the, you know, if we have to work on that truck, you have to move the backhoe out to actually work on it. We have to change tires, do whatever. The backhoe doesn't even fit in the shop. We have to lower the boom to back and pull the tobacco in. Any questions on that building? These slides are pretty much self-explanatory, I think. But if you guys, I'd love for you guys to take a personal tour. And this is the salt storage. This is all the salt storage that we have for the city. As you can see, the wall's deteriorating. Once we go inside, you'll see why.
We'll do that, too.
Because we have it jammed in there. And once again, the backhoe doesn't fit in there. We have to have the boom drag the blacktop to go in and clear that out to load the trucks. When this was built, it was probably great, but now it's not, you know? If anybody wants to know where the old diving board went from the pool, it's right there holding the salt back from rolling out the door. And this is our signed storage building slash outbox covers and stuff. You can't even walk into place. So you have to move stuff to even get in to get what we need. The recycle building is where we switch the winter, summer equipment back and forth, which is down in the yard, down in the Memorial Park. And once you, we go inside, once again, everything's, you gotta move stuff to get the stuff. There's our mowers. There's extra salt spreaders that can't fit in the shop that we have to go get to put on the trucks. There's plow in there that doesn't fit in the shop. And you can see the air compressor is buried, and you can guarantee that's what we need tomorrow. So we have to move everything out to get to the air compressor, and then we put everything back in. And whatever we put back in last is what we need the next day when stuff happens. And then there was, we just wanted to show you the yard because we would like to, 90% of the stuff that's in the yard would go in the new building instead of sitting outside. Like the recycling bins, we cover them up with the tarp. They get full of water. It's just a pain. The bucket truck's been vandalized twice, I think, there in this, in that yard. And you see all of our attachments laying everywhere. We try to keep them on a piece of blacktop. We've had to replace hoses because they're riding out in the sun. And there's the one that I don't like. We have our extra pipe when we have a water main break, and you can guarantee whatever we need at 2:30 in the morning to the bottom of the pile. This is the old wastewater treatment plant. We keep stuff out there as well. As you can see, there's pieces of equipment that are not in there that should be in there. We're combining all these buildings into this. There's our jetter. With the jetter being out there, when we get to the next slide, it'll explain a little bit. Maybe Kevin can explain a little bit more on that. He's had more experience than I have with that.
I'll take that one. Once we get to that one spot. As you can see, there's more equipment stored behind the trucks just to be able to get stuff in that we're not in the weather. Now, this is the entrance to the old plant. As you can see in the picture, you can have to cross a stream to get there. That blue pump and the jetter. If you keep it in a non-heated building, you have to winterize it every time. Now, 2:00 in the morning, as we always go, if there's a sewer backup, we have to get that jetter out in the summer. Or in the summer, it's fine if it, we can keep it in a non-heated building. This building here is the only one that is heated, other than our main shop, that that can be stored in. But now, crossing a stream, you have a heavy rain event, storm comes up. In the picture, on the right-hand side, you can see that concrete wall. Water has been up over top of that before in this, in this plant. So once it's there, anything in that building that we need is inaccessible from that way. There is a back way to come in, but if it's up that high, there's not even that way. So we're trying to get this equipment from being in an inaccessible point to a building that's in town that is readily available when needed.
The Roberts Mill Park Garage. We keep stuff out there as well. It's deteriorating. It's, once we see the one picture, you can see it through the block wall. I mean, it's crumbling.
Next picture, oh, actually.
This is one of the buildings you said used to come down?
Mm-hmm. As you can see, you can see right through the block. And we keep the Park and Rec's directors wagging out there. Our goal is to, whatever we need in the parks, if we get this building, take it down to the recycle building and put it all in there. So when we have to put it in the park, it's in the park instead of driving all the way across town, then dragging it back, back and forth, and wasting hours and hours a year of doing that. This is the old police garage. We call it the Police DPW Parks Garage now because there's a little bit of everything in it. Which is right out back. As you can see, the, we have our tar pots in there. We have the Christmas decorations that we use in Memorial Park that we have to drag back and forth every year. And that building, in my opinion, needs to go as well. And then these are our signs when we have parades in town. We have to set up all the signs around town. We store them there. That way, they don't get buried so much. But as you can see, they're starting to get buried with bicycles that the police department get. Any questions on any of the old stuff? Like we said, this is our new layout. Six buildings and one storage yard are going in here. So we can get everything inside. It's not a Taj Mahal. It's what we are needing, in my opinion. If you go to the next page on your Now, you see, this is just the layout of the building. What they're gonna look like.
All the papers on that, what we handed you is not on the slide. We just put a couple of the high, high points of the, the design.
And as you can see, there's chlorine storage room that will be updated on the end of the building. Right there it is. We start all the way to the right. Upper corner. That's the chlorine storage room building that we need for the water department. Next to it is for the clerk, a storage area that we need to keep our files. Right now, we have them in two different places, and they're full. We going down, we have two offices. We have a resting room that we know in the future we're gonna have to be here. I've personally been here for 36 hours straight on a snowstorm, and sleeping in a office chair is not well. The classroom is 40 seats. We have to take training for our water license. The police department needs to take training. We can be used for the council members. We need to do training for you guys. I've sat in this room and took a state test on my knee because we have nowhere to do it. And then there's a break room that will fit everybody. Two bathrooms. And then we actually, with the request from Dan, the IT department head, we have a IT room for future backup for the whole city. It's not just DPW. We've combined everything. And then the mechanical room. And as you see, we need a wash bay for the state of Maryland because what we do most of the time now is we have to run our stuff that are real, is really, really dirty to run it out to the sewer plant. So now we're wasting more time. We've, the building's 190 by 111. We actually had it bigger, and Morton Building came back and said we can squeeze it, we can put it all in here with room to expand. Any questions on any of that? And we also know it's a lot of money, but we're doing a lot of different things in the building. As you can see, the salt barn is 50 by 80. We all know that take the classes with the MS4 permit and from the state, they're pushing the brine. So while we're building the building, we want to build it big enough for future that we can put the brine inside. We're gonna run the conduits from the buildings already, so they're already gonna be there. So we don't have to dig up a pretty blacktop when it happens. So we're trying to prepare this as much as for the future as we can. We spent months and months and months on this, and we had a hand-drawing paper. We gave it to Morton. They're like, we're done. We're done here. They gave us back in this. So we did our, we did our homework. We just didn't pull any of this out of the air. We just, we did our homework. Any questions, concerns?
With the salt building, is, is it coming down the pike that Maryland is, that the state's kind of no longer allow spreading of salt in a general way, that they're all gonna want
They're gonna want us
brine instead?
They're gonna want us to do so many lane miles of brine. You're still gonna do salt like they do, but they're moving to more and more lane miles of brine operation, which is less salt.
Yes.
So it's, it's coming. We might, we might not see it for 10 years, but we want to be ready.
You know, because I've, I've, I've seen in other maintenance yards where brine tanks have been outside.
Yeah. And we, we've said in the class of the county where they replaced them twice ready because the sun deteriorates. So we went
Plastic tanks.
As soon as we left that, we're like, no, we'll make it this building big enough to store them inside. Try to save money in the long run.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council?
Do have a little bit to add there. The current salt building, we have to receive our loads outside, push it in, and then clean up. This building is being built that trucks can be, everything's gonna be offloaded or loaded inside of the building, that we are not in the weather. Trying, and trying to keep with not having that excess salt out into the weather. And if you saw on the, the buildings, on these new plans, solar panels, our process is to get solar panels put on both buildings that this can be a net zero project where we're not adding electric. And actually, with the amount of electricity we would be using, we're probably gonna be generating more than we'll ever use in that building.
Yeah, because our guys aren't in there eight hours a day. They're out moving on the streets. And with the buildings, like I said, a few of them need to be tore down because the main shop itself, our shop, needs to go, which would add more parking for the baseball. The building back here, in my opinion, needs to be looked at heavily. The building at Roberts Mill, and then our big shop or machine shop that we call, we would recommend giving that to the Parks and Rec to get rid of all the little buildings they have all the way through the Memorial Park that are all mismatched, and they can put all their equipment in there. Somewhere for them to store their equipment to make it look nice in the whole park. Instead of just getting rid of that building.
And they could actually put in some batting tunnels that they could do stuff when it's inclement weather. They could bring the kids in and let them get some practice in.
But as you can tell, we, we've done a lot of homework. We've done a lot. We've talked a lot internally, Jim, all of us.
I've had some communications with some older residents in town. The block building that we are housed in does date back closer to the 50s, not the 60, not the late 60s, early 70s. So, I mean, we're talking a building, and Randy didn't touch on it too much, but where they sit in the morning, if we get a heavy enough rain and something like we had this past weekend, it looks like a, a stream running through. It comes right through the walls. So it is well overdue to have that building replaced.
I will say, I appreciate you guys putting the panels on there because I know that's what the governor's office was looking for as far as grant funding and stuff like that went.
Yeah.
Because that's the biggest thing is, you know, finding the funding outside of the city for.
That was our goal, to try to get as much funding as we can.
And there's, there is a possibility of, and Jim has talked about this a little bit, geothermal for heating and cooling. So we're trying to do everything we can to be good stewards of the amount of money we're asking for. We want to make sure we do, do it right the first time and not come back. We don't want to do a hodgepodge of just put stuff out there willy-nilly, I should say.
What's the, what's the plan for the remainder of the property? Is there, have there been any thoughts as to what to do with the, the rest of that?
We've talked about solar, more solar panels, pretty much.
Yeah, I know there was a, there was discussion at one time about a big solar thing in, in Memorial Park. Is this someplace where we could, that would be a concentrated, large enough area that it would make sense to do that?
It may be close enough to the substation to be considered for community solar or something like that. I, you know, we certainly can work with CQI, our energy consultant, see if there's some opportunity there.
And we get close to the end of that property, you would possibly be getting into a floodplain area. So, I mean, that could impact it a little bit, but again.
If you see how we shifted everything closer to the one side, because that's where the water and sewer is.
Right.
So we're trying to save money on the infrastructure of coming into the, into the property.
Before we move on, I just want to point out that when we talked about this last month, this, that, I suppose it may have been the first time that some folks have heard about the project, but keep in mind, this has been in our capital improvement program for a number of years now. Last month was just the first time we talked about the idea of borrowing money. Because until recently, this has been something that's been farther out, you know, on the horizon. And now we're getting close to, you know, the finalizing a building design. We now have a site that's locked in. We don't have to run half a mile of water and sewer to the site. So we're closer to the project becoming a reality now. That's why we brought up the funding idea last month. But this was not the first time that, that you guys have heard of the project. So it, you know, this detail may be new to some members of council, but again, it's been in the capital improvement program for, for the last several years. So just wanted to kind of emphasize that point.
And even, even for that, I mean, my biggest concern was just making sure the public knew what the building was, what we're looking at, why we're doing it. And that, that was the biggest point of me asking you guys to come out here today, just so.
I'm glad to be here. I'd rather tell you what we know. We did all the work, so.
I appreciate it.
Any comment, further comments, questions, concerns from council?
No, I think it's a, it's a good idea. I mean, it's, it's well past time to get, get them in some livable facilities. And, you know, the idea of concentrating everything and being able to give the parks back some, some buildings and so that they can have more things for Parks and Recs, I think it's a good idea.
Appreciate it, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Councilmember's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Anything from council members? Proceeding forward, public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Is there anybody who'd like to make public comment pertaining to non-agenda items for the night? Hearing none. Proceeding
If, if you don't mind, I can just interject one thing here. Something that somebody had brought up to me, just in, not really, in more than in passing, but it has brought it up. Is there an ability to, with the video feed for this meeting out, for someone who is watching live
For the Zoom.
to comment back on the Zoom? To, you know?
Did we ever figure that out, Jim?
The technology is there. It, it becomes a little difficult to manage, but, but technically, we're able to do it because we did it during the, the, I guess, height of the COVID restrictions. We ran a telephone line, and whoever was presiding at the meeting, or myself, kind of had to juggle the, one more thing with that. But we had a call-in number that people could use to, to make comments, but that was kind of a basically to maintain continuity of operations and still, you know, have some opportunity for public input during our meetings when we couldn't meet in person. So logistically, it's, it's another thing to, to juggle with. And it's also it's harder to discern, I guess. You know, we certainly can, can ask people like we always do to provide their, their address and their name when they, when they begin their comments. But enabling that to be done in a virtual environment basically opens the door to anybody who might want to, you know, get their voice out. That's not gonna make the effort to come here that, you know, and
The keyboard warrior syndrome. And that was my concern that I expressed.
Opens the door to that possibility. So, and I think it, it just was a previous council decision that when we went back to the in-person meetings, that we, that the preference was for in-person comments rather than virtual. The technology is out there, though.
And the county currently allows you to call in for comment, correct?
I think they, they allow phone, phone comments.
All right. I just wanted to bring it up because it was brought up to me.
Okay. Are we? Did you want to discuss any further, or is that?
No, I was just, I, I wanted to, to put it kind of out there. And if there are valid reasons not to do it, I'm fine with the valid reasons not to do it. But like I said, it was expressed to me by, by a citizen who wanted to know why couldn't we do that? And I'm like, well, you know, we do have the keyboard warrior syndrome, and that's a, you know, always an issue when you go to something where they can just type in comments, especially if we don't have the ability to filter them.
That's fair. I, I know, I've also received a comment. There's mainly from a gentleman who had a handicap, and it was a little bit harder for him to come to the facility and everything like that for in-person comment.
Right. And so that, that's the other side of that, is there people who can't get in here. So how do we make that a combination?
And that's right. I mean, certainly if, if there's, you know, someone that, you know, the term shut-in used to be used. I don't know if that's considered, you know, a real term anymore. But, you know, folks that have a hard time getting out might not have transportation, you know, you know, for anybody in that situation, you know, coming here to provide comment is going to be difficult. But again, you know, we also have the availability to, you know, reach out to mayor and council via email through the city website. And we have the info mailbox to be able to respond to questions to anybody. So
Now, Tony Town Connect.
Right. And, you know, so I think there are ways that people can, you know, pose questions and provide comments to the officials as well as city staff, you know, with mechanisms that are available remotely already. You know, it just wouldn't be necessarily in this particular format or forum.
Okay. I appreciate it. Any further comments, questions from council regarding that?
Any additional public comment pertaining to non-agenda items from the public?
Hearing none. Proceeding forward to resolution ordinances and agreements. Ordinance 04-2024, fiscal year 2023-2024, budget amendment-3. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
I have a, a question. We have 181,000 that 500 I can't see. It shows as, as a, as a increase in the fund balance. And where does that come from?
So fund balance is essentially our, our savings. So we didn't budget to purchase the property for the DPW building, so we took money out of savings to do that. So that's showing as a, an increase in, on the revenue side that we had to show to balance the expense side.
Well, I mean, I understood that, that part of it. I just didn't know what the, what the source was.
That's, that's essentially just showing coming from savings now being considered revenue.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. Proceeding down. Resolution 2024-04, water allocation for March. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
Before we move on, I do just want to call one thing to your attention because it would be somewhat invisible this month. Typically, when a, when a subdivision or site development project reaches the preliminary plan approval stage, it goes on this projects with preliminary, preliminary plan approval line. At last month's planning commission meeting, the EVAPCO office expansion was granted both preliminary and final site plan approval in one month. So effectively, for the water allocation resolution, that allocation went on, or would have gone on and come off at the same time. So the numbers that are before you tonight do reflect a 3,000-plus gallon decrease in the amount of available water for the city. But the project isn't called specifically out on there because it basically would have popped on and off right away because they got both approvals in the same night. So I just wanted to call to your attention that the figures have changed, even though there's not a specific project labeled on there.
So is that, should that have been there where the total allocated, the 250-gallon allocation, should that have been altered?
So it, it typically would have gone on the line that has the zero with projects with preliminary plan approval. And had they gotten preliminary plan approval and then had to wait a month to get final, you would have seen it for a month, and then it would have disappeared the next month. And then it comes off of the top figure, the 39, 335, is showing reflecting that figure already taken. is showing reflecting that figure already taken out. So it just sort of.
I guess I would, why, why would it not reflected in the?
Went within one month, so it wouldn't be depicted on here other than in the totals.
I guess, you know, why would, in the total allocated this month, the two fifty, why would it not have been added at that line?
So, it was, um, it was granted in February for both preliminary and final.
Well, I mean, I understand the, the net zero on the, on that, on that lower line. I'm just, I'm, the line, you know, to above that where it says two fifty allocated, uh, which would be one home. There's no, there's no demarcation there.
That's right. That's, we typically carry at least, um, at least one info lot just so that if somebody does show up kind of out of the blue to put a, a home on an existing lot of record where there's no planning commission involvement, we have the money available without saying, oh, wait, you need to wait until the next council meeting before I can approve your house. So we just always try to keep at least one info lots worth, just in case somebody comes up. So that's what that one two fifty is. And actually, that's, that's kind of a rolling number. So if, if, um, our zoning administrator approves a single-family dwelling, that uses two hundred and fifty gallons of water. So we would take that off. It'll come out of the top number and then we basically replace it with another holding spot for another lot should somebody come in. So it's, um, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll have a site plan or something that, that goes on there with preliminary plan approval so that you'll, you'll get a better illustration of the routine with it. But it's been a while since we've had a project at that stage. So this is, I'm just bringing it up because this is the first time in many, many months that the figures have changed.
Does that suffice your question?
Thank you for doing that. I'm, um, I'm still.
Yeah, I think he's still wondering why it isn't on that line, right?
Yeah, what, what, yeah, it, it should be in the total allocated line where it says two hundred and fifty.
Well, this is what, this is what is available for the coming month. So this is what's available for March. So we've, we've, um, because of the accelerated approval for EVAPCO, it, it doesn't, it didn't linger on, on the resolution. Typically, you would, you would have seen it on projects with preliminary plan approval where the zero is.
Yes, I, I, I mean, I, I understand that portion of it. I guess, you know, it, it, because it kind of disappears because it wasn't there in February and now it isn't there in March. But it, you know, at, at some point, the allocation occurred. So if I go back to February's, uh, resolution, that GPD should be thirty-nine, three thirty-five plus some number.
Right, it was forty-two thousand five eighty-five last month.
Thank you. It'd be, I, I, because of how that happened, it would have been nice to have seen some kind of line there to tell me what was going on.
That's why I wanted to call the numbers to your attention because otherwise it would have been invisible and you wouldn't have possibly realized that, that the numbers decreased. That's, that's.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to cause confusion.
Yeah, right, that's, it just.
I was just trying to point out because of the way.
All the way through my brain.
Because of the accelerated approval process that I, I didn't want the drop in the number to be essentially invisible to you.
Sounds good, thank you. Any further comments, questions, concerns from council? This is for the resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, water allocation for March. Hearing non proceeding forward, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five, adoption of Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
Shall I give a quick summary?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that would just for the.
So the Carroll County periodically updates the, the, um, the county's hazard mitigation plan. This gets participation from all the municipalities within the county as well. It's a fairly long process. The, once the, um, folks in emergency management get the plan together, it goes off to FEMA for their review and approval. So the plan was actually finalized in twenty twenty-two. It went to FEMA for review. It did get approved, came back to the county commissioners last year for their approval. And then we have a year after that in order to approve it or adopt it ourselves. So by adopting this plan, in the event that we do have a natural disaster or some emergency that would qualify for FEMA, for federal assistance, by adopting this, it basically keeps us eligible for that FEMA funding. I, as I said in my memo, I'm not aware of any instance where we actually have received any FEMA funding, funding.
Does it, does it affect the flood insurance?
No, this does not directly. So basically, we're just signing on and, you know, to a plan that we contributed to back before it went to FEMA back in twenty twenty-two. And this is really just kind of administrative to make sure that we stay qualified for FEMA funds in case we ever need it. And I hope we don't, but good to have it available just in case something unforeseen should happen.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing non proceeding forward, city manager report?
Okay, this part I can keep brief because I don't have a whole lot of updates for you. As far as, uh, Roberts Mill Road Broad Street, we're just waiting for things to warm up, for the paving to be reexamined and also to go back and do some fine grading and reseeding where we need to. Because as you'll recall, by the time the project wrapped up, we were at the very, very tail end of the growing season. Fortunately, we had a relatively mild winter, so a lot of the seed that was put down, you know, gosh, was it end of November, early December that some of those lots were seeded? I'm pleasantly surprised a lot of that took. And, you know, a lot of those front lawns are green again. But there are some, some areas that need to be touched up and stuff. So once the warmer weather arrives, um, we'll be looking back at that. And, um, the paving subcontractor is going to be coming out to, um, take a look at the areas where the pavement's deteriorated or, and there's a lot of, um, a, a lot of areas throughout the project that the pavement, the, the wear course didn't stick. So we'll be revisiting that, you know, hopefully in the next month or so as the temperatures start to climb. On the stormwater front, we've got a request for proposal drafted, um, reviewing it now. And, uh, deeds of easement for the properties where the new storm drain line we'll have to cross have been, uh, drawn up by the surveyor, but we're waiting for deeds of easement to be drafted to refer to that survey. So we're hoping that we can get property owners to sign that, sign those, you know, through the remainder of March and early April, I hope, so that we can get the project bid and still get it done this fiscal year. Last thing on my report is, uh, just, um, the FY twenty-four sewer rehabilitation, we're really in the design stage. The survey work is, has been done by, um, RTF associates. That's, information's been turned over to CDM Smith, so the design process is ongoing. And we'll have more on that, I guess, in a couple of months when the design's done and we're ready to, um, put it out to bid. And this project is very likely going to spill into, um, the next fiscal year.
Sounds good. Questions, comments, concerns from council regarding the city manager report? Hearing non proceeding to department reports. You got anything to note?
If there are any questions, I'll do my best. You know, we have, we have Kevin here tonight in case there's any questions on the DPW report.
Questions, comments, concerns from council?
Yeah, I had, uh, a couple of, uh, comments brought to me following the Main Street meeting by people who I am not married to, um, or live across the street from. And I had a, a, a good conversation with the city manager this morning regarding those concerns. Uh, and I really feel like those, uh, those have been addressed and that we are going to move forward. I think that, um, kind of, uh, is going to take a little bit of a restart and a re, a sense of, of direction. One of the things I think we do need to, uh, look at is one of the, is a real, a real issue with the HCD is the fact that our Main Street manager is also full-time economic development director, which is not what they would like to see. And so, um, the question is, how do we change that? Because you're trying, you know, even to get someone at halftime, you're still looking at fifty thousand dollars. And where does that money come from? So, but I think it's something we, uh, ought to look at. I think our economic development director has enough to, to do that, um, that, you know, someone who's, who's focused is strictly Main Street, I think, um, would be helpful. So, um, I think it's something we ought to look at.
Let's see where, we should see where the Main Street committee goes with this next meeting. I know they've come up with a new game plan on how to really bring this back together. So let's see how it goes at this next meeting. Let's readdress it at the next workshop after that so we can kind of see if it's been addressed and things are flowing correctly.
Um, yeah, I, you know, I'm, and this isn't something that's going to happen in one or two meetings. I think that this is going to be.
That's a long-term vision for it.
Yeah, I, I think in, in two, we need to implement a vision, um, you know, decide on a vision. I, it, one of the things that the city manager and I talked about this morning is that we kind of tried to hit the ground running, um, without knowing for sure where we were going. And so I think a, a kind of a restart to really, uh, focus on what, what the mission of the organization is and where they want to take it, I think, would be a, uh, a, a good positive step forward and a, and a kind of a backup to take a first step that I think needs to happen.
Okay, and let's, let's see what happens with the new plan that they've set out. I know the chair's come up with a new plan for how this will go forward for Main Street. And let's see if it works out. And if not, then we'll need to kind of address where it goes out from here, from, uh, from the council standpoint. Any, uh, is that your only?
Yeah, that, that was all I had.
Any further questions, comments, concerns from council regarding the department reports? Hearing non proceeding forward to new business, monthly financial report. Questions, comments, concerns from council regarding that? Hearing non proceeding forward to accounts payables. Questions, comments, concerns from council regarding that? Hearing non proceeding forward to planning and zoning discussion. Councilmember Tillman, would you like to?
Sure. I sent everyone, uh, an email, um, the other day, um, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, has been, uh, discussing how we should move forward. We're, we're at a point where we are getting ready to start with a new comprehensive plan. We're, um, looking at engaging the services of a consultant to help us get that going and get that together. So in, in that, in that effort, there are some questions that the, um, the planning commission kind of wants to hear from council in terms of what, um, you know, what, what, what do we really see as a direction? And as I went through all of this and I sent, you know, and I sent this, uh, email out that, you know, as I stated at the end of it, this is, it's a, some, some heavy, heavy questions in here and some big issues. And it's not something we're going to be able to resolve and talk about tonight in terms of, of the individual issues. The city manager had a good suggestion this morning that we, uh, perhaps should put together an, an open meeting, like a town hall style meeting with the planning commission and council, um, to talk about some of these issues and invite public comment on that. And just dedicate that meeting to those things because it will be a lot of discussion. Uh, I think that's a, a good idea. Uh, I think we could probably do that in conjunction with a kickoff of, of a comprehensive plan. And, and because the two are obviously tied, tied together. So, uh, I think that's a question, that's a, a route to go. If anyone has any questions about what we're asking about, I'm, I'm willing to entertain those questions. If you'd like, I'd like, I could go through the questions so that, um, the public can hear what we're, you know, the kind of things and, uh, issues we're talking about. But that's up to you if you want to go, if you want me to do that.
Um, I'm fine with you going over the questions. My biggest thing would be, you know, just know, you know, where we stand on the questions. Because in my opinion, we need to address that with our comprehensive plan. We need to go with whoever is the firm doing the comprehensive plan. That, that's right, those are questions they're going to be asking and everything.
All, all of these questions are important. Everything, everything that you've outlined in your email is something we need to discuss. There's nothing there that's frivolous. And I, I think it's, uh, you know, it's definitely a, a job where the planning commission and the council need to sit down and chat about this and, um, maybe a, maybe a, uh, a two meeting process where, where we come up with, with what the council and the planning commission feel and then, then say, this is what we've come up with public. What do you all think?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, and we've talked to one consultant, do we have another consultant lined up, um, the, for Jim? Do we have, uh, a, a second meeting with a second consultant?
Don't have it on the calendar yet, but it's pending, yeah.
So, um, as we get a consultant on board, one of the first things that, that they've all talked about, anyone that we've gotten proposals from, uh, is public input. And, um, so that public input, uh, will help guide us on some of these, on some of these questions.
That's the biggest, I just don't want people to think we already have a perceived stance on this before we've actually gotten feedback.
No, no, exactly. And that's why I think we ought to have kind of a town hall kind of style meeting, which I believe that, and we should wait until we have that consultant in place if we're going to go that route. So they can be part of that and hear the answers to these questions as they try to help us develop.
Do you want to go over the questions as, so?
Yeah, I would like to go over the questions just very quickly. You know, I don't want to take a, a whole lot of time. You know, the first and foremost question is, you know, everyone talks about the, uh, small town feel. And the real question is, what does that mean? Because that probably means something different to everybody here, to everybody sitting over there. You know, what, what do we want that to look like? And how does that translate into, um, uh, ordinances that help guide development, redevelopment within the city? What density, housing densities, uh, street layouts, street widths? Where, where we, you know, where we, can we mix commercial in with, uh, existing residential? And things like that. And, and along with that, should we be reviewing our design standards regarding street widths? And, and, and street layouts and parking and, uh, all those other things that, you know, we have a, we have a book of standards, you know, that have been in place for quite some time. And, you know, at that time, the, 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 uh, thinking in that kind of residential development was for big wide streets, you know? And now you look at Roberts Mill Road, it's exactly the opposite of that, which is kind of reflects the current thinking in, in street design. And so we probably ought to be looking at updating our design standards. Another big topic is community village zoning. You know, we, we do have a community village zoning process that, uh, calls for rear-loading townhouse garages with, that would, uh, you, where you pull in from an alley behind the house. We've had requests and, and also in, out in Meads Crossing, we have a number of places where we have front-loading garages. And so, you know, or what do we really want? And what do we, should we be sticking to one thing? Another issue regarding car parking is, uh, you know, where we have garages that face the front and single-family homes or in townhomes that would have a front-loaded garage is driveway length. You know, in Meads Crossing, the, the, I think the driveway lengths were set short. Do we do that or do we end up lengthening those?
In Meads, I don't think they are shortened. They're, they are shortened in Carroll Vista.
Right.
In those streets.
And so the question is, when you do that, because you want to be, you want to encourage people to park their cars in the garage, not in the driveway. But if you short, so you shorten the driveway to say, you know, but what ends up happening in reality, of course, is that people end up parking their car in the driveway and the tail end of the car sticks out over the sidewalk. You know, so that's a, that, that actually is kind of a hot button issue among a couple of the commission members. And so we'd kind of would like to, to get a, um, get a consensus on that so that we, uh, aren't just arguing about that amongst ourselves. And then with that, you know, what's the council's opinion on community village as a zoning, um, overlay in general? Is this something that we really do feel we want to keep doing? I don't, you know, I don't know that we've gotten quite the results that we wanted to in the first couple of rounds where this has happened. So, uh, I know we've, we've made some changes to it and strengthened it somewhat. But we sometimes seem to be making, uh, zoning decisions based on what the developer tells us will sell.
You know, that's the whole point, I think. You know, that's the whole point, I think. Since the community village ordinance came about, there really hasn't been another development that wasn't a community village ordinance. And I think that it's time we reassumed control and rather than have the builders tell us what to do, we tell the builders what to do. We always cave in. And that discussions we have among county, or Planning and Zoning and the city council need to be straightforward and address that. But we need, may need some outside advice, expert advice, people who can advise us from, from an experience standpoint, maybe people who have dealt with some of these issues in the past and can give us the current trends of thinking about how these developments occur. I know the, the width of streets and, and things like that has just changed, has evolved over the years, and you really don't look for wide streets and so forth like they used to. But anyway, I just think we, th, th, this is a very complex and important decision we need to make for this town, and we need to make sure we have the advice that will help us make it. I don't know that we're qualified to do that on our own, that's what I'm saying.
That's why we're doing the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, exactly. That's why we, we were looking at engaging the services-
We have a comprehensive plan, a consultant that's coming on board to do all that. And that's why we're saying for this stuff, not to have that discussion right now at the council level, but to wait till that consultant's ready to engage the public and the consultant and the council all at once, so everybody can be engaged in what is happening for this direction of the town.
And I, and I think it's good to get these questions out there so we can all be thinking about them and talking about them. Let's see. Two other, two other things. One is adaptive reuse of the existing buildings, especially in the downtown area. You know, what can, what would we like to see? And, and what can we do from a planning and zoning and possibly an economic development or even a Main Street standpoint to encourage the kinds of things that, that we would like to see there? If that, and that kind of relates to the first question about that small-town feel and what are people looking for? You know, should we be, should we be trying to target redevelopment in the downtown district? And what, what would that look like? And how would we, how would we encourage that kind, from, that kind of redevelopment from a planning and zoning standpoint? One other thing is giving, given our current water allocation restrictions that we were just talking about, we only have so much, so many gallons per day available, and we have, you know, kind of more things on the, on the drawing board than we have water allocation for. So the question, you know, do we make it incumbent upon developers who are going to be looking for more water allocation to bring that to the table with them? Or is that incumbent upon the city to, to find that water? You know, or, or can, can we use some combination of this and maybe as an incentive or disincentive, as you will, to prior, to prioritize projects? Given the stretched resources of the fire and police department, should we be holding up additional developments under the APF codes until we are fully staffed at police and the county hybridization of the fire and EMS service is in process or nearing completion? And I think that's a, that's, that is a question that has come out, directly out of the Planning Commission. We have a number of members who are heavily involved in the fire department and who have a real concern in that. I've spoken to the, to the chief about trying to, you know, if we know things are in the process, about trying to maybe be ready to overstaff if we can to meet the additional demand as it comes. You know, that's, it's kind of a little bit of a pie-in-the-sky thing, but I think it's something that we ought to be looking, looking forward to doing.
That, that's something that is almost separate and apart, that adequate public facilities issue was passed years ago. And I'm not, I think it needs to be looked at and brought up to date, just like everything else.
Right.
So whether it's, whether, as it is today, is it, is it adequate public facilities? Or is it overstated or understated? Those are the kind of things, questions we need to be asking. And, you know, it's, it's, you're just, just to say, oh, we've got an Public Facilities Act, is the Adequate Public Facilities Act adequate? That's the question we got to ask.
That's a good question. That's a very good question. And lastly, for, for developable, developable product, properties, large properties, and there are some large parcels, which would be in the path of the projected bypass. Is the city willing to trade infrastructure development in exchange for wider way or outright construction of bypass segments? You know, should we bring water and sewer to someplace that doesn't have water and sewer on the city's time in order to trade that off for a section of bypass on another piece of property or another segment of property that that developer might own? You know, to me, I think it's something that we ought to look at. And how big is the priority to, to, to do this, to, to make the, make the bypass a reality? I think that, frankly, I think the only way that it's going to happen in my lifetime is that we get this done through with the assistance of private development because we're not, you know, waiting for the, this county and the state to build this road is, is a long, long, long wait. So those are the issues that I had, had brought up. If anybody has any questions or comments on those or anything they'd like to add, I'm certainly willing to hear it, listen to it now. Or you can get back to me. We can, you know, as we move closer to moving forward on the comprehensive plan, these are going to be some big topics, good discussion. So just wanted to bring it all forward.
Just for, for benefit of the council members who weren't in attendance and for the public, as, as Councilman Tillman mentioned, we have met with the first of a couple consultants regarding getting a full proposal for a comprehensive plan update and the costs associated and so on. And, you know, this particular consultant had a, an individual as part of their team who specialized in zoning ordinance reviews. So that, that can be rolled into the comprehensive plan update as well so that we, we walk away with more than, okay, this is your land use, this is your priority growth area, et cetera. But these are some changes to your ordinance that can help get you there. And, you know, we've, we've had so much discussion, for example, with community village over the last, well, several years. Carroll Vista was our first community village, and they received a blanket exception for the alleys and rear-loaded garages because of the nature of that as being an age-restricted community. You know, I think that has proven to be a, a benefit for the, the city, that that community was, was approved and allowed to develop the way it was. I think it's proven to be a very positive for the city. Meads Crossing utilized the community village ordinance, not an age-restricted community, but, but we did end up with the narrower streets than a conventional subdivision and a higher density. But it didn't really quite check all the boxes for the aesthetic that the community village strived for. But again, at the time, there was no other active development, and the city was eager to see that development. So the city was willing to compromise, you know, on the, on the plan approval. So I think what we're seeing is developers are certainly seeking the option to do housing types beyond just the standard R10,000, single-family dwelling. I think we're seeing that the, the market demand is there for a different type of housing product in addition to the conventional single-family house here in Tawny Town. But what we're not seeing is appetite or the financial, the demand that makes the numbers work for a project that demands the rear-loaded alleys and such because of the additional cost. And then there's also some trade-off for, you know, what the city's maintenance obligation is and snow clearing and things like that, that, you know, it's kind of a, a coin toss. You know, you've got, with a narrow street, you've got the benefit of less stormwater management, less pavement to replace down the road, and, and so on. But then it's, if there's a car parked there, it's even harder to push snow in the winter. And then you get complaints, well, how come I can't park on my side of the street if there's only parking on one side? So it's, it, it's a fascinating process to work through. And I'm really looking forward to getting some input upfront and talk through these things. You know, do we, you know, we build 38-foot-wide streets, and then, surprise, people drive fast. And then people that live on the 38-foot-wide streets call and complain that everybody's speeding. So then we narrow the streets, people do slow down, but then people call and complain because there's not enough room to park. So it's, 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 it's a very interesting process to work through. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to talking through these issues and our zoning codes, community village, what growth should look like, et cetera. Because, you know, we have finite resources for water and sewer capacity, and we need to be thinking about what's the model going to look like when we can't annex another 100 acres and put another 300 houses on that? What's it going to look like when we're ringed by agricultural preservation and we can't, can't grow outward? Will our assessable base keep up with our increase for electricity and fuel costs and salaries? So these are the things, this, I think this plan update is, we're at a really critical time because we, you know, in our lifetimes, you know, we will probably see the city completely encircled by agricultural preservation, and we will not have the ability to do business as usual as it's been done for the last, you know, 100 years. And what's that going to look like? What can we do now to guide what growth we can have to make it a sustainable pattern that will be, you know, self-supporting for the city and, and revenue, at least revenue-neutral? We find a lot of residential development costs more in the long term than it generates in tax revenue. So with what opportunity we do have to grow, we really need to have these conversations now about what's the best way, you know, what's that going to look like so it works for the city when we hit that wall and we can't grow out anymore? So it's, it's going to be a fascinating process.
I'm, I'm looking forward to the process. Looking forward to learning what, you know, consultant who has experience from other, other cities and other areas, and, and we're trying to keep that narrowed to Mid-Atlantic in general and Maryland in specific so that we, you know, are in keeping with what's being done statewide, so. All right, well, thank you for your, for your time and indulgence on that. I appreciate the opportunity. I know that the Planning Commission appreciates the opportunity to bring these items forward and to start the discussion.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any additional further comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none proceeding forward to Main Street, city code change?
This one, sure. This is just, members of the board and the subcommittees have brought this up. And when we, when we put the basic rules of operation for the Main Street Advisory Board in place in-
Twenty-
Twenty twenty-two, I think. I didn't, I didn't get that little piece on my excerpt that was in the packet. But I, I think some of the things we put in there were a little bit reactionary to some problems that we identified with the way the previous board had operated. Particularly, there were questions pre-COVID, when the Main Street Board was meeting, as to, you know, whether their meetings were public or not. The monies were held in the Community Foundation of Carroll County rather than through the city treasurer. Did the Main Street Manager report to the Main Street Board in that function or to the city? And I think we tried to clarify all that by putting it in the code this time, which we had never done before. But we may have let the pendulum swing a little bit far in the other direction with the idea that not only would all meetings of the Main Street Advisory Board, but also any committees thereof be subject to the Maryland Open Meetings Act and, and so on. The, the subcommittees, such as the Design Committee, Promotions, Arts and Entertainment, Clean, Safe and Green, Economic Restructuring, those are more like work groups. And even though the, the Main Street Board itself is an advisory board, they will be looking at their own budget. You know, the, the subcommittees or the work groups are going to come up with their work plans, what they expect that's going to cost. That's going to go to the advisory board, who will eventually be putting together a budget. And, you know, the, the idea is that, you know, they will operate for that year under that budget, just like we do. That budget will be available to you to see as well. But the subcommittees or work groups really don't have any kind of, you know, spending authority on their own or any, basically, any of their significant decisions are going to be approved by the advisory board. So these are the groups that are going to, for example, the Main Street Board decided to raise awareness, they were going to participate in the Carroll County Arts Council's Peep Show this year. So they're doing a, you know, a Main Street exhibit that'll be a part of the, the Peep Show. So their meeting to build a diorama of marshmallow peeps needs to be open to the public under these guidelines. Does that really make sense? That, that's the kind of thing that, that we're looking at. So, so they're requesting the idea, basically some relief on that, that the subcommittees not be subject to the open meetings requirement. Because any, basically, anything that they do, any expenditure is going to come through the advisory board, and those meetings are open to the public.
Robert should get a legal opinion on that.
Yeah. And this is just to see if we want to go forward with the idea or not. Yeah, there's no ordinance that, that's been drafted at this point. What's in your packet basically just highlights what the change could be if we do want to pursue that. And certainly, we would get the legal opinion on that. And if the legal opinion says, better safe than sorry, keep it the way it is, then that's what we'll do. But I wanted to get the council's input to see if that was a direction that you wanted to even consider.
Questions, comments, concerns from council?
So if, if Monday night, if we can just get a consensus on whether we want to pursue looking at it further or not, that would be great.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jim. Proceeding forward to approval of special event permanent application, MWA Music in the Park, August 3, 2024. Questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none, I am proceeding forward to police radio purchase. Comments, questions, concerns from council?
Is this something new? I mean, I don't remember talking about radios in the last six, eight months.
We initially had hoped to replace two radios per year for the next several years. They obviously do have a serviceable life, and a number of them are kind of towards the tail end of that. But this year, we had money available within the police department budget, and that's actually one of the things that, that we've got in the, the budget amendment that's been before you the last couple of months. We have the money available to buy, to piggyback on another entity's contract and, and acquire more radios all at once because we have the funds available this year. So rather than buying two a year and that cost increasing a little bit each year going forward, we can buy a bunch now because we have the money available. And it's on your agenda-
But what is the life of a police radio?
I'm going to defer to the chief on that one, if he can give an estimate there. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I mean, I guess there can be an anomaly, and they can last a long time. It might be like your washing machine or your refrigerator. But in, in, in general, technology is what requires replacement. So it's not always about the longevity of the radio, but the new technology is replacing the functionality of the radio. In our particular instance, we're proposing to buy 12 radios, and we have 12 radios that are 10 years or older. And 10 years is a long time for a police radio.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
But this is, do these radios mesh in with our current system so that the other radios we have are not made obsolete by these radios, correct?
Further questions, comments, concerns from council?
Just one other question. How many total radios is that, operational radios would this, would this make with ones, taking out the, the ones that are 10 years old that you're going to- taking out the, the ones that are 10 years old that you're going to be putting aside or whatever?
We presently have 17 radios. We have 12 LEOs, 12 law enforcement officers. And as we've been indicating, in the near future, that'll be 15. So when these 10-year radios are replaced, they'll be discarded or...
Right.
And I might add that of our 17 current radios, some of them are pieces of radios.
I get it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. Proceeding forward to Meads Crossing, Section 2A Surety Reduction.
There's a memorandum in your packet about this one. Meads Crossing has completed construction of Section 2A, well, pretty much everything out there. But they're specifically looking at reducing the construction surety for Section 2A. There are some punch list items to complete. And of course, as I mentioned, we still have the concern about some inflow to the sewer system out there that the developer is working on. The developer has, is working to have a contractor come in and do smoke testing to try to identify potential sources of inflow or leaks into the system before we accept it. But I have consulted with our consultant engineer as well as Public Works, and they concur that if we reduce Meads Crossing to the maintenance surety level of $181,980, that that would be more than adequate to cover any sewer repairs that might be identified related to the inflow concern. So with your, with your approval Monday night, we will follow up with the developer and authorize them to reduce the surety bond from 245,00109 to 181,980. Now, this will not start the clock ticking on the maintenance period, however, because we have not yet accepted deeds to the streets or the deeds of easement or to any of the stormwater facilities, anything like that. So that, that clock won't start ticking until after the inflow infiltration problem is addressed and we're comfortable that, that we have a good, tight sewage system being turned over to us.
Will you have the, the letter that will accompany this available to us Monday night? So that we can read the verbiage in the letter or...
I can, I can make that available by Monday. Sure.
Additional comments, questions, concerns from council?
That is the letter that will go to the developer, correct? Okay, yes. Just wanted to make sure.
That was the one I meant.
Okay, got it.
Hearing none. Proceeding forward to public comment pertaining to agenda items. If you have a public comment pertaining to an agenda item, please come forward to the microphone.
Just off the top of my head, with the radio thing for chief, the, the radios that we use with the police, are they the same radios or compatible as the ones that we use for the fire department and EMS? Would it be something that if you're replacing 12 radios and you have POS radios and fire and EMS may have some POS radios, maybe they could be married together and, you know, make a couple radios for these guys that, you know, would help them on, on site or scene for, you know, their calls to get them through until they could get funding to purchase a couple other radios? Or is it something that would behoove us since there's a couple extra dollars to buy 12 radios for the police to look and see if maybe fire and EMS might need some radios or something?
We'd be happy to consider those antiquated radios being...
Thank you.
And what you were asking earlier about someone moderating the website, I, I can understand what you were saying like during COVID, you know, how someone would have to answer the calls and everything. There's got to be some way of verifying, there's got to be a verification service that is out there that would verify whether it's a residential person or not. I know, like you were saying, keyboard warriors and stuff like that. We don't want to welcome that kind of thing in. But as the mayor was saying, I, I too know quite a few people who can't attend the meetings, who do watch from home and have questions that they would like to ask.
That's where the question came from.
Right. And, you know, it, it, there's, there's got to be some kind of service out there, like that, that they could sign up for to verify their identity and be able to communicate through, uh, to, to the council itself, you know? But it, it may end up costing, it may end up costing the, the city an extra expense of having to hire, like a moderator to monitor the, the channel or something.
Jim, if you could, could you follow up with the county to see what their current process is for calling in? Just so we can see how they're handling and we'll, we'll go from there. Check how the county's doing it first.
I, I will certainly make, make those inquiries. I would like to point out while, and while we're still in the public comment period, that, that this period as well as the period earlier on, you know, non-agenda items, the, the intent of that is for council to hear comments on items. But we often find that rather than providing comment, people are asking questions. I would just like to point out that we have lots of opportunities for questions to be posed to both the elected officials and to staff any, any day of the week, not necessarily in the public session. So we have the Info at Tawnytown mailbox that's monitored and questions are sent to the appropriate department for responses. And, and, and now we have the app that we can use to share information as well. But oftentimes, questions come up and it puts officials and staff in a position of trying to answer on the fly with something that we haven't had the opportunity to research or delve into. So if you want to entertain questions, I would suggest that rather than getting back into, getting into a back and forth discussion on something, perhaps we hear the questions or comments. And if some response is, if we're able to provide a response, we can do so at the end of the question or comment period so that we don't start. We've seen a few meetings kind of devolve into more of a debate scenario than is really intended for this segment. So I'm sorry to get up on the soapbox here for a couple of minutes, but I just wanted to clarify, there are other ways that questions can be answered by the appropriate staff people to make sure we get accurate information.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Like they could, they could ask a question through a moderator.
You want to come on?
No, but you could ask a question through like the moderator and then give, and then, and then we would have, your, the council would have like three minutes or four minutes to respond and then move on to the next.
It's, it's my turn to speak. Hello, I'm Kenyatta Brooks again. And I'm taking it, Jim, that you're really speaking about my question and answer period from last week. And that's fine. I'm going to say this. I lived in Tawnytown. I built my first property here in 2001. And I've subsequently built another property here. At the end of the day, being a longtime resident here, it is the census of Tawnytown City Offices, Mayor, Council, to not allow the public to speak, comment, or ask questions. This is something that has gone on for years on end. If there's a person that's standing here and has a question for the council and has a question for the city manager, the questions that are asked typically are very general and specific in nature that we should have answers to. If we don't, you could always respond politely by saying, we can get back with you. And, and that's actually happened by your city clerk in the past. So to prevent the public from speaking or asking a question is not the proper way of holding a town meeting. Now, if we're going on for hours and then, I understand. Your, your ex, um, mayor pro temp said we have three minutes, but that is to keep the meeting moving along. I would agree to disagree with you if things are always held in an orderly fashion. Today was wonderful. We all worked together, we collaborated and got the meeting done. What we need to do is not stop the citizens from asking questions, but to maybe, in fact, allow, and if you don't have an answer, get back with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I think, I know we don't, we see eye to eye on this, but my, my thing is that this is a time for citizens to ask questions. This is a time for them to address their elected officials. And I want everybody to know, I will never stop somebody from doing that. And that is, we're, we're not here to stop you from asking questions. And I do, I do like to see it done orderly. Today was a wonderful meeting. But again, the, the idea that everybody should go through the alternate, alternate forms instead of coming up here and asking questions, I think that does a disservice to the residents who also want their questions to be seen publicly.
One of the things that I wonder...
With all due respect, I, I understand that perspective. However, I'm speaking to the policy that has been established by council that we are trying to adhere to. If council wishes to make this more of a question and answer session, that is absolutely fine. And I'm not trying to discourage public comment or questions. I am just pointing out that the format that was established is to hear comments and not to have a question-answer session. If council wishes to do a question-answer session, that is absolutely fine. And we will do our best to field questions and respond. I'm simply addressing the fact that the process established was not a question-answer session, but it has sort of turned into that in, and not specifically last month, but in many months recently. So if we want to shift that, that is absolutely fine. But I think we need to make that decision. I don't think that, what, what I'm concerned about is that we have public comment listed on the agenda. We don't have Q and A. If you want Q and A, that's fine, but you need to let us know that.
Some of that responsibility also bears on the elected officials, though, who are making it a Q and A or a debate.
Yes, yes.
I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing is realistically, if a resident comes up here, voices their concern, voices their question, we'll get back to you, the city manager will reach out to you, the clerk will reach out to you, or something of that sort. Or again, if you have a fast, ready answer that you know is correct, you give it to them, but not to engage in debate in it. And I know we've, we've talked about this before, that it isn't supposed to be debate.
And, and begin to engage in debate, which is not really, again, which is not what this segment on the agenda was, was envisioned to be. So if you want to do something different, that's fine, but I think we just need to be on the same page about it.
I will say the three minutes, you normally only see if there is a queue of people coming for public comment. Normally, we do not have a queue of people at our town halls or workshops. That's normally why you'd have a three-minute queue for it.
Right. And again, you know, as, as staff and your city manager, I'm trying to fulfill the, the path that, that council has set and the protocols that council has set. So if you want to do something differently, you just need to tell me. Because otherwise, I'm going to try to, you know, to stick with the protocols that you have told me to work under. So if, if you want to change it, just, we'll change it. But if you don't want to change it...
Is there another meeting we can have where public is allowed to ask questions? Maybe another day on the agenda on the month? Maybe we can meet three times a month as opposed to two times a month? But the public should be allowed to ask questions.
And we, we've talked about making it toward the Monday meetings where you could also have public comment. However, if I recall correctly, that was shut down by a majority of council.
Right.
But it could be a question today and an answer on Monday. Because I asked a question on that Wednesday and that Monday, my question still didn't get answered and it had, it did today. So how can you, you guys need to determine that? How can we as citizens, taxpayers, ask our questions publicly? Because there's others that may have the same questions, but may not have enough nerve to come up and ask the question themselves. So if that's something that this town is used to doing, it is. I know I've been shut down for years to the point I've been silenced and I'm no longer being silenced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing on, on this. I wonder if, you know, if, if there is, if we do set up a process wherein that people can write in a, a question, you know, kind of live as the, you know, as, as session, as the session goes on and then we, that question then or, or, or comment gets read during this segment. You know, perhaps if somebody wants, maybe there could be some sort of preregistration of people, of someone who may want to do that. You know, if, if someone knows they can't be here or, or has that issue of, of being able to get here, they certainly could reach out to, to the city in advance and say, hey, I'd like to make comment at the meeting, but I can't make it there. You know, or, you know, this topic is on the agenda and once it's been addressed, I would like to make a comment about it. You know, because there are things that may happen live during the meeting that somebody may want to, to comment on that, you know, that they wouldn't be able to unless, you know...
I might suggest if, if, so we've also set up an Ask the Mayor mailbox that perhaps someone, if they are not able to attend a meeting in person but want their question to be voiced publicly, perhaps they would use that Ask the Mayor mailbox and note on there that they would like this to be, you know, addressed during, during one of our workshops or something. And maybe we could facilitate that as part of...
Somehow combine this with the Tawnytown Connect app.
And that could, that could perhaps be worked into when we do council reports at the end of the Monday meeting. Maybe the mayor could have a segment where he does, you know, responds to, reads Ask the Mayor questions and responds to them, you know, in the, in the meeting scenario. So, I mean, I...
And we already have it in the Tawnytown Connect app. I think it has the Ask the Mayor as like the third or fourth option.
Right, it's, right. I mean, it's, it's leveraging the, the website ability. So again, you know, I don't think, I don't think the idea is to discourage people from reaching out, from asking questions or making comments. Again, it's, it's just about what the, what the intent of, of the agenda is and, you know, the, the direction that we're given so that we know how to, how to respond appropriately and maintain, you know, this evening went, went wonderfully. Some Wednesdays, it doesn't go wonderfully. And that's why I'm bringing it up, because some months, it evolves into multiple people on the official side of the table talking at the same time and people from the audience starting to call out and, and it's, um, not the ideal situation. So that, that's what I want to really avoid is this free-for-all that we've seen some months. So there's probably some middle ground between, you know, not offering responses and what we see some months with people shouting from the audience and three people talking from the table at the same time. So that, that's what I really want to avoid.
I appreciate him. We'll talk more on the Ask the Mayor thing for the Monday meetings read afterwards. Any additional public comment pertaining to agenda items? Hearing none. I am proceeding down to the adjournment. However, we are going into closed session. Give me one moment here. On March 6, 2024, at 8:58 PM, in accordance with the Maryland Open Meeting Act, General Governmental Procedure, Subtitle 5, Meaning Section 3-305B, this meeting will be closed as closed only to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential The following is listed of the topics to be discussed. The authority of the Open Meetings Act for having such discussion in closed session is citation applicable 3-305B8. Litigation to discuss pending or potential litigation. I'm looking for a motion from council to adjourn into closed session.
I move that we adjourn to closed session.
Looking for a second?
Seven.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It carries. We will adjourn for 10 minutes and meet back up for the closed session. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.